Chad, Kathy? Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the August 14 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And ask if you have cell phones, pagers, or similar devices. If you would silence or turn those off now, we would appreciate it. If you are not the applicant and you've come to address us today on a case, sign up sheets, which look like this, are on the table outside the chambers. And if you'll complete it, we'd be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And with that, Commissioners, first order of business is approval of the July 10 minutes.
I'm of approval.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes. And the minutes are approved. Nick? Thank you. Caught you. Okay, next item is continuance request. JJ?
We have several on the continuance list today. First is item 50, PC 10379, defer to September 11. 51, PC 10363, defer to September 11. Item 52, CE 886, to September 11. Item 53, SPUD 778, to September 11. Item 54, C 6638, to September 11. Item 55, C 6598, to September 25. Item 56, PC 10364, to October 9. Item 57, PC 10383, to January 15, 2015. Item 58, SP 486, to September 25. And item 59, PC 10380, request to be withdrawn.
Is there anyone here today who came to address us on any of the items that JJ just read, items 50 through 59 on our agenda? Commissioners? Motion? Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the continuances. Cast your votes. They're approved.
We have several new continuances. Item 29, PUD 1550, to September 11. Item 44, PUD 1545, to September 11. Item 45, C 6640, to September 11. Item 46, C 6632, to September 11. Item 47, 6643, to September 11. Item 48, C 6645, to October 9. And item 49, the item regarding the annexation of the Sportsman's Club property. The applicant has requested that this be deferred indefinitely. And there's one item that's not on the agenda. That's item 26, PUD 1553. The applicant requests this be deferred to September 25.
And I'm going to suggest that item 38 either be continued indefinitely or withdrawn. Is the applicant here for that one? Assuming I have the right number here, Brian, let me make sure. I do. On the convention site?
Yes. Can I wait till my client gets here and just have it heard at 38, then we'll discuss it then? Because he's not here yet, because he knew it was not going to be for a while.
Well, I don't know about anyone else, but there's no way I would vote to give property to someone who's going to turn around and sell it back to the city because it's-
I understand.
-going to be the convention site?
I understand.
So...
I mean, if it's a denial, that's fine. I just want to make that decision for him. I submitted this application two years ago, so he just asked me to resubmit it, and that's why I'm here. So...
All right. We'll wait. So now we're considering items 26, 29, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, and 49. Is there anyone here who came to address us on any of those? Did you sign? Ellis, your name and-
Virginia Swerengen, 15516 Azalea Avenue. And I'm here to address Northwood Housing Planning. We don't want it there because they're planning on building small lots, small homes. Plus, we have to pay for our roads, and they'll be cutting through to Piedmont. It's just going to tear down our... the cost of our homes, you know, and it's going to tear up our roads. And we really don't want this to happen.
Well, thank you. You'll need to come back when the item is actually heard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
There may be some here to address the page. Woodson? Is there anyone?
I don't think anybody signed up. Okay, a motion, Commissioners?
Move the additional continuance.
Second, a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the additional continuances. Cast your votes. Are there any continuance requests from the public today?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kelly Work, and my address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304, Oklahoma City. And I am here representing neighbors in connection with items 21 and 22, which are companion items, SPUD 775, and the final plat, C 6635. I have just been retained as of late yesterday afternoon by Gary and Mary England and Peter Doublebauer, and perhaps others, who live in the Muirfield area that is directly adjacent to this proposed development. And we are merely requesting that this item be continued to the next meeting so that we can have an opportunity to meet with the applicant and to address any issues that are unresolved. I understand, I was not present, but I understand there was a meeting with certain members of the neighborhood and the applicant's representatives the night before last, and that there are some unanswered questions that were left at the end of that meeting. I did, as soon as I was retained yesterday afternoon, I contacted the applicant's representative, Dwight Butler, and asked him if they could agree to a continuance request. And he called me back late this morning and said they were not able to agree. But we're just asking that it be continued so that we can have further discussions with the applicant and see if we can resolve our differences.
Okay, Dwight?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, for the record, my name is Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering on behalf of the applicant. And they did, in fact, have a meeting with the homeowners association, so to say, onsite Tuesday evening, and did discuss several items, and the applicant has agreed to all of those. The reason they can't agree to a continuance at this time is they have a deal pending on a 9,000-square-foot building, and a further delay would jeopardize that.
When did you say you met with the neighbors?
It was Tuesday evening, sir.
Two days-
And I was not there, just to be clear.
Two days ago?
Yes, sir. The two members of the application that were present are here, should you have any questions. But I have a list that was forwarded to me of what was discussed and agreed to at that meeting.
Commissioners?
Were the people being represented by Mr. Work at that meeting?
I honestly don't have a roll call at that meeting, Mr. Gales.
Kelly, do you know, if your client- Mr. Chairman, it troubles me that we've had a meeting and we apparently resolved issues, and then all of a sudden, legal counsel is retained. It... Something appears to be a little out of whack here.
Now, the flip side of that is... The only meeting occurs less than 48 hours before we meet.
Yeah.
Which doesn't give people very much time to think about what's occurred, so...
And they did have a vote at that meeting that was unanimous for approval.
Well, Commissioners, I can't make a move, so...
Are there people that were at the meeting here?
Only the applicants, to the best of my knowledge. They were both present at the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, my name is Greg Reneger.
Greg?
My name is Greg Reneger, and I'm one of the members of BEKM Holdings LLC, who's the applicant in this cause. We did have a meeting Tuesday night in the clubhouse at Muirfield. There were probably 35 people in attendance. They asked all sorts of questions. We came up with all sorts of drawings to show them exactly what we're going to do, what the replat or the SPUD was going to look like. And they took a vote at the end of it, and it was unanimous. And we agreed to certain points, and they were concerned about the number of buildings. The way it was originally set up, there were going to be 11, and we agreed to cut that back to seven buildings. And...
Are those changes reflected now in the documents that will be turned into the city?
No. They haven't yet, no.
You have a list?
Yes, sir, I do have a-
What was agreed to?
Yes, sir, I do. And I was going to submit that when our turn came up, and agreed to it on record.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Reneger.
One final question, Mr. Chairman. I know you're, Kelly, I know you're just in the case, but do you know the basis of your two clients' objection?
I really do not at this point. I mean, just generally, their concerns are... I don't think it's with the use that is proposed, or uses that are proposed. As I understand the SPUD, it is proposed to be a office development. But there are concerns about how it is proposed to be laid out, what it's going to, what the architectural materials are going to be. There is another development that was done by these same developers that is in that same area. And the feeling was that there had been representations that had been made with respect to how that was going to turn out, and it didn't turn out as had been represented. So there was some concern about whether or not the adequate controls were being placed in the SPUD to ensure that what was being shown and represented was, in fact, going to be what was developed. And I don't think that the outcome of the meeting was unanimous, because I know Mr. Doublebauer was present at the meeting, and he didn't concur.
And that's where I would go next. If one of your clients was there and it was unanimous, I don't understand why he's your client, I guess.
Well, I guess the answer is it wasn't unanimous.
Well, there's at least one dissenter, then, essentially. So 34 to 1.
So, and I, you know, Mayor, all we're asking is for an opportunity to sit down and meet with the applicant, to see if we can resolve the issues. I think that certainly, this is the first time this application has come before the commission. I don't think it's an unreasonable request, and it's certainly consistent with the commission's practice to encourage parties to meet and try to resolve their disagreements before they get to the floor and have a hearing. So we would just ask for that opportunity.
That's true, but apparently there has been that meeting, is what's troublesome to me. And at least, maybe we should hear a little more about the urgency of the deal, why it can't be, why that contract can't be extended or something.
Just to, why don't we just go ahead and hear the darn thing? If we want a continuance, let's do it. We're hearing it now anyhow. So I just say, let's put it in order, and we'll do it then. We want to continue it a little later on in the meeting, maybe these guys can go talk. They're number 21. I mean, we got everybody listening to a continuance request. This is taking too long.
Good point.
I say we go ahead and thing in order, if we're going to hear it at all.
Okay. Don't disagree.
Yeah.
So...
We're going to hear it.
Yes, sir, I understand. I just want to clear the record.
Well, you can clear it or we hear it. I understand what you're going to say, I think, so thank you.
All right.
Any other continuance requests from the public? If not, consent docket? JJ?
One additional comment on that.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, it is item 21, however, the first 15 go pretty fast. That said, perhaps Mr. Butler can get with Mr. Work, and maybe Mr. Work can get his clients on the phone before we hear that, and we can make some progress.
Yeah. Okay. Consent docket?
Fifteen items on the consent docket today. First is item 1, initiate an application to close a utility easement. And item 2 is CE 887, the application to close the same utility easement. Item 3 is initiate an application to close a 20-foot alley. And item 4, CE 889, the application to close the same alley at 300 North Blackwater Avenue. Item 5 is ABC 816. Item 6, PC 10384. Item 7, ABC 814. Item 8, C 6164. Item 9, Mr. Chairman, I believe someone signed up on item 9, so we'll pull that and hear it in order. Item 10, C 6634. Item 11, C 6642. Item 12, DA 24123. Item 13, PUD Specific Plan 1531. 14, PUD Specific Plan 1369L. And 15, PUD Specific Plan 1512.
Other than item 9, the ones that were just read, 1 through 15, anyone here to talk to us about those?
Move the consent.
We have a motion and second to approve the consent docket, except item 9. Cast your votes. It's approved.
First item of the public hearing will be item 9, C 6633, final plat of villas at Crestone, located west of county line and north of Wilshire Boulevard.
Is the applicant here?
Mr. Chairman, my name's Jeff Felling. I live at 8021 Hawksbury Road. I'm not the applicant, I'm one of the residents that the plan affects. I just had a question as far as the easement. We've heard the residents, we've heard different stories of whether we're going to get a 10-foot easement or not. I just wanted to clarify whether or not that's approved for a 10-foot easement.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
I'm applicant, I'm Paul Schroeder with Ish and Associates, representing Row Grebo. Is it the 10-foot easement between villas in Cottonwood? Yes. Yes, we're granting them a 10-foot easement along the east line.
Okay. Commissioners? Action? We have a motion and second to approve item 9. Cast your votes. And it's approved. Thank you.
Next item is number 16, PUD 1542, application by Oklahoma City Waste Disposal to rezon 7600 Southwest 15th Street to the PUD 1542.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Dennis Box. Keith Gibson and I represent Waste Connections on this application. Keith is now handing out a document that shows you a trail that we're going to put in on 15th Street. We'd like to propose that as an alternate to the sidewalks, and we have coordinated with your staff on that issue. But to talk about the application, this is an application where we learned last year that Southwest 15th was not going to be expanded to a four-lane, would remain in its present configuration. Based on that, we went back to the trust, coordinated with them in regard to the utilization of 20-plus acres on the north side of the landfill. And we had two other pockets. We had purchased some property to the south, and there's some property on the middle. And it totals out to 39 acres that we'll be able to provide additional area and space for the landfill. In addition to that, this will be raised 19 feet when we're finally done. It'll add 10 years to the landfill. We know of no protest. We think it's a good application. We have coordinated and gone through the Riverfront Authority, and we would ask for your approval. On the technical evaluations, we would agree to all the technical evaluations except for the sidewalk. The exhibit that's been handed out, we believe that this trail system, which will be put in along 15th Street, will be actually 12 feet wide. We would like to supplement a standard sidewalk and put this in. And this is part of the PUD and part of what we are agreeing to do.
So we would delete TE 3?
Yes, sir.
In our approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No one has signed up, Commissioners? Nick?
Dennis, you mentioned you're going to add 19 feet of height.
Yes, sir.
From the existing grade, or from the top of the existing landfill?
The top.
So you're already in excess of the maximum height that was allowed originally, that we blessed before, and now you want to go 19 feet higher?
Yeah. Based on the new areas and 19 feet, if you keep in mind how large this landfill, and you're driving by, won't look any different than you see right now. But it'll add 10 years to the life of the landfill, and we think we'll continue to allow, you know, 60% of Oklahoma City's trash to be brought to the facility. Because it's a facility that we think is in the right location, and citing a new one is going to be very difficult in the future.
Thank you.
Are any other discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
We have a motion and second to approve item 16. Cast your votes. And it's approved. Deleting TE 3, I'm sorry.
Item 17, C 6624, preliminary plat of Council Business Park, located north of Southwest 29th Street and west of Council Room.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Jason Spencer from Craft and Toll. What we have is a piece of property that's already zoned industrial. This is a preliminary plat. There was originally some protest. We did work with the neighbors. What we have is an agreement in place where what you see on the southern boundary of this plat, we would have an 8-foot fence and some landscaping. They are here to stand up if you need them to, or give you a thumbs up and say, yeah, we are in agreement. But as of this week, they have signed off on honor modifications, and we would ask for your approval. We do need a variance to the cul-de-sac length, based on the way the property is shaped. We think it makes sense, and it still meets the goals and intents of the code.
David?
Yes, sir.
Have you seen their letter?
Yes.
And you've agreed to what they want?
Yes, sir.
Lighting, 8-foot fence, all the other things?
Landscaping, yes. And they are here.
No one signed up, Commissioners?
David, I don't have a problem with the variance on the cul-de-sac length. I do have a question on the cul-de-sac itself. This being an industrial PUD, is that cul-de-sac, is the radius large enough to turn a truck around?
Yes, yes. I did ask the engineer, he confirmed that it is.
Thank you.
Move the variance to TE 3? We have a motion and second to approve the variance.
Wait, Mr. Chairman, shouldn't we incorporate the issues that the neighbors wanted with the screening and the fencing and all that protective of the northern properties of the-
It's a plat.
Huh?
It's a plat.
So how do we make sure that those are going to be done?
We have a binding agreement with the neighbors. And if it didn't get done, I guess they could sue my client, but we can't add this to a plat.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the variance to TE 3. Cast your votes. That's approved. Move the application.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve item 17. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Item 18, PC 10381, application by Tip Hale to rezon 208, Southeast 21st Street, from R1 Single Family Residential to I1 Light Industrial.
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tip Hale, 128 Southeast 21st Street.
Okay, and you're expanding?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, no one has signed up? Questions, comments? Motion?
I don't have any questions. I move for adoption.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 18. Cast your votes. And it's approved. Thank you.
Item 19, PC 10382, application by David and Tyler Spencer to rezon 13320, Southwest 29th Street, from RA Single Family Rural Residential to AA Agricultural.
Good afternoon, Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll, here on behalf of the applicant. So what we've got is 10 acres located on the south side of Southwest 29th Street, between Frisco Road and Cemetery Road. The property was rezoned to RA in the past with a preliminary plat of Somerset North Estates. That plat has since expired, and the 10 acres at hand here today was sold off and is under separate ownership from the rest of that plat. So we're asking you to downzone that back to AA with the intent of dividing that property into two 5-acre tracts and building two single-family homes on it. It's consistent with the surrounding zoning of AA, and we think it'd be a good fit, and would ask your approval.
No one's signed up, and I'm delighted to advocate for downzoning.
No, that's my comment. This is a great application. I move approval.
Well, I found it a little refreshing, but I had to go back and look. I didn't know you could go backwards.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item 19. Cast your votes. And it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 20, CE 888, application by Ideal Homes to close a platted utility easement, Lot 4, Block 4, Summers Place, 833 Hutton Road.
The applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Sean Rieger at 136 Thompson Drive, attorney for the applicant. This is a fairly straightforward matter. A lot line was adjusted, did not accommodate the shift in the easement that was at the edge of the lot line. We're simply looking to vacate it. We have relocated it to the new boundary.
Okay, we have Jeff Senth, who has signed up.
My big deal, sir.
Sir, now wait until you get to the microphone, give us your name and address, and then tell us what your big deal is.
Pardon me, this is my first time-
That's okay.
...to do this, so I am a little bit nervous.
No problem.
I just have one question, it seems to be, in mind.
Can we get your address and name and address?
Oh, Jeff Senth.
Okay.
532 Hutton Road, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
My main question here is, it appears to me that permission should have been granted for any type of movement of that line prior to them developing that property. When us as residents, and I've kind of been nominated from two or three other residents to come and question this, because we were told they could never build on that property. Parts of the other issues don't really involve this court today, or this hearing today, but that lot will, and several others, will not incorporate an 1,800-square-foot home that we were told that they had to be minimum to build. They've already started construction on these four homes, and one of them being right there and adjoining right next to my property at 532. They have already moved that line right to the boundary line, and have built a structure, a home. It's near completion at this time. So I'm just trying to find out if that is all permissible. If you understand, I've kind of rambled a little bit, but...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Senth was a defendant in a quiet title lawsuit to accomplish the shift of the property lines because of an inadvertent error in a plat. That was all approved through the city. There are no covenants that I'm aware of that prohibit building. It is a legally-platted lot. Certainly, by every right of zoning and plat, is allowed for a single-family home.
Well, once again, that probably needs to be heard in front of another council or court in May. But the bottom line is, is what we were told, as far as we is concerned, was somewhat of a deceptive practice to tell us that those lots could not be built on, and that one specifically because of the easement. So, and that's all I need to say.
Yeah, I don't know how we go back and undo a quiet title action that has been approved by the court.
Okay, and my deal is still, is permission to be given prior to constructing any development on that property.
I can't, we can't solve that for you here, unfortunately. It's not something that could actually be put before us. But, I mean, I don't know when the structures were built, and I don't know when the quiet title action occurred, which came first and so forth, but...
I would also like to point out that my lot has reduced in size twice since I signed, or once since I signed my contract and closed on that house.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Senth did not contest the quiet title action. He wasn't party to it.
That was probably the venue where you could have addressed...
And that may have been, sir, but at the same time, I met with their people at my house and they pointed to the spot where my property line was supposed to be and their words to me from Mr. Zach Roach was, "What I'm sitting on now is mine," and that has not turned out to be the case. Thank you, sir. Thank you, panel.
Yeah, we're sorry, but it's not something we can address.
Mr. Chairman, question for staff. With these redrawn lots, do they meet the minimum lot size requirements of the zoning?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, commissioners? I move approval. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 20. Cast your votes and it's approved.
Item 21, SPUD 775, application by B.E.K.W. Holdings to rezone 16300 Muirfield Place to the SPUD 775 District.
We're back on the continuance request or not? Where are we?
I would prefer that it not be continued, Mr. Chairman. Well, once again, Dwight Butler, anchor engineering on behalf of the applicant.
And Mr. Work?
Well, if that's still an open issue, we're still opposed to the item being heard today and we would ask that it be continued to the next meeting to give us an opportunity to meet with the applicant and see if we can resolve the differences that we have. I did learn in response to Commissioner Gale's question that the Englands were present at the meeting on Tuesday night and it was, you know, it was a relatively small group. I asked Mr. Butler, I mean, there are approximately 106 homes that exist in that Muirfield area and according to their information, they had 25 to 30 people who were present at this meeting on Tuesday night. So there are issues that remain. I'm at a disadvantage because I haven't had an opportunity to meet with my clients, to see the property, to review the SPUD. I've seen the staff report, but we're really not in a position to effectively address the merits today. We would ask that you defer it until the September 11th meeting. Thank you.
Okay. And Dwight, tell us again, the urgency is a contract?
Yes, sir, there's a contract on a 9,000-square-foot building that had, the construction has to commence prior to November in order for that contract to go through and this, the new zoning that we bring before you is actually a lesser zoning than it currently has. Currently, we can have R4 and we've taken that off the table. We have not, we have not reduced any of the architectural requirements whatsoever. We've actually added some. I honestly feel what you have before you is a better zoning than is currently in place.
Now, can you tell us what the agreements were that were made?
You bet.
And which you would incorporate in this application now and...
Yes, yes, I certainly will. One, we agree to cap the number of buildings in Murfield Commons north at seven, the one on the south and a total of six with the backs facing the lakes. Number two, to review the visibility of second-story windows facing west on that southwest corner building and either no windows or opaque glass so that privacy concerns. And item number three, they agreed to shrubs and trees to obscure the emergency stairs on the north side of the building abutting northwest 162nd, which is once again above and beyond what was on the original PUD and we have added even more restraints.
Okay, commissioners, you've...
Well, I'm a little confused, Mr. Chairman. We have to commence construction by November 1.
Yes, sir.
This is a zoning request and a plat request.
Yes, sir.
For us. If we were to hear that in the first week of September, why would that not allow you to meet your November 1 deadline?
We still have to get through the eighth floor with building permit process, sir.
I understand that. I also understand that you have to take the zoning part to council, which obviously is either already doctored or can be double notice. With the plat in place, you can start your dirt work and all that. I don't see why you can't still meet your November deadline.
It is, it's very difficult to try to rush anything at all through the building permit process. I understand where you're coming from, it's just the hundreds of projects that I have taken through the eighth floor, sometimes it can take a considerable amount of time.
Well, to next point, if we approve this today, when would the council hear it?
Approximately six weeks.
And if we double notice it, they'd hear it in six weeks?
My point?
Double note, yeah, correct. We could get it three weeks after the September 11th meeting with the double notice.
Which is where they'd be anyway.
That said, Mr. Chairman, I understand the client's position, but I technically don't see any difference if they stay on it, if they double notice it with the council. And, you know, we put the old firm on hearing it up or down on the 11th of September.
Looks like a motion. I can't make a motion. Just sorry. Okay. Move the continuance? Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this to our first meeting in September, which is September what? 11th? 11th.
The other thing that that will afford the applicant, the opportunity to do is to incorporate all the agreements in our document. We can see them.
Right, and that is a bit of a change going from 11 buildings to seven buildings. I mean, it's better, but still, okay. So we have a motion and a second to continue item 21 to September 11th. Cast your votes. And they're approved. It's continued.
Mr. Chairman, we should also, although it hasn't been...
I'm sorry?
Although it hasn't been read, I believe item 22 goes with it.
There's a motion, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Yeah.
I believe JJ may even want to read that.
Well, it's going to take an agreement then for you to continue this, but you wouldn't have the zoning.
Obviously, we wish to work with the planning commission. I mean, I've always found that to work out better, but I'm a little unclear as to the city council. I mean, you said a double notice and we would be heard by the council the same time that we would had we been approved today?
Not sure that...
Yeah, we, it would be, with a double notice, it would be introduced Tuesday before the 9/11 hearing.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you.
And we could maybe even do it a week earlier.
Okay. We're just trying to meet that 9,000-square-foot deadline.
All right. All right, so...
I would request the continuance on the final plat for the zoning to be in place.
Okay. So you're agreeable to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so a motion and a second to continue item 22 to September 11th. Cast your votes and that's continued as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dwight.
Item 23, SPUD 776, application by Demetra Bailey to rezone 2200 North Bryant Avenue from the R1 Single Family District to the SPUD District.
Give us your name and address, please.
Demetra Bailey, 612 Bath Circle.
And you're putting a catering and banquet facility in an existing building, which is a church, as I understand it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. No one has signed up, commissioners? Lee?
I'm very familiar with this, this piece of property and it's an excellent facility already now. Are you looking to add on to that facility at some point?
At some point, yes, sir.
Okay. This is going to be a great addition to that community, so I move for adoption.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 23. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Dennis, you voting? You might? Good, thank you.
Item 24, SPD 777, application by Robert Mitzi Henry, rezone 13600 Memorial Park Drive from PUD 249 to SPD 777.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Mr. Dave Richards, who's also with the applicant out of Houston. What we have is a SPUD 777 that will allow the construction of a Papado's Restaurant. It'll be the first inclusion in this marketplace for this restaurant. It's based out of Houston. There are several other places around the country, but it's an exciting concept to have here in our city. We have an odd situation where we have a PUD in place that allows the use, but there were some very odd restrictions in that old PUD about percentage of restaurant space, percentage of bar space, and to make this concept work, we had to file this SPUD. And with that, we do have three technical evaluations that we do agree with. I met with several of you and you voiced some significant concern about the pole sign that we had requested. We certainly thought 35 feet was reasonable and appropriate, maybe even higher than that, but what my client is now in agreement with is an eight-foot monument sign and with that, we would ask for your approval.
Let me interrupt your presentation by holding up this picture and this picture. Not only is there a downzoning issue on the agenda today, but there's a monument sign in place of a 50-footer. Congratulations, it's a good...
Well, it was only 35.
Bob, along those lines, Mr. Box and I, I drove the area and discussed that sign and I encouraged him because of the overpass and all that and he maybe wanted 100.
And that's, we're still agreeable to that if it's the commission's desire.
No one has signed up, commissioners?
I move approval. Second.
With the eight-foot monument sign?
Yes, as shown, and, and Mr. Chairman, in that regard, if you, if you look at that rendering for a minute, that is what I'd call a destination sign. It draws, draws your eye, it's a good-looking classic sign. It'll be, it'll be a positive.
Well, the restaurant's a great addition. I've eaten in them in other cities, so... We have a motion and a second to approve item 24, conditioning the eight-foot monument sign. Cast your votes and you're approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 25, PUD 1552, application by Loves Travel Stops to rezone 7217 South Choctaw Road.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, 1819 South Morgan Road on behalf of the applicant. What you have before you today is a PUD to allow for a new concept that Loves is looking around, looking at around the U.S. They, they've got a boat and RV storage around their travel stops to allow people to store their boats and RVs, so. It's my understanding that right before this meeting, staff deleted TE number two, the requirement for the sidewalk. We agree to the remainder of the TE's and we have any answering questions?
No one has signed up, commissioners? Discussion?
Sidewalk's not required in that location.
It's a rural arterial.
Rural arterial.
Bar ditch.
Make a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second to approve item 25, deleting TE2. Cast your votes and you're approved.
Thank you.
Item 26 was deferred to 9/25. Item 727, PUD 1554, application by Village Verde Developers to rezone 11420 Northwest Expressway.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Chris Anderson with SNC Consulting Engineers representing the developers. I've read the staff report. There's one TE, we agree with that and request approval of the application.
So just... No one's clear? Chris, there's nothing, no other changes with regard to uses or any, because we spend a lot of time on Village Verde, I know, and so it's all just minor boundary adjustments.
Correct, it's kind of a reallocation of the boundaries on there.
Nobody signed up?
I'm not entirely clear about this, the mini storage stuff. I mean, there's not going to be more mini storage than there is already, is there?
No.
Okay. My mother lives out in this area and let me tell you, I will hear about it if there is.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 27. Cast your votes and it's approved. Thank you. Sir? It was continued.
September 25?
We did that quite a bit earlier.
Okay, item 28, C 6636, the associated preliminary plat of Village Verde Edition, Section 3.
Again, Chris Anderson with SNC Consulting Engineers representing the developers. We have read the staff report and the TE's and agree with them. There is a variance request on TE number four and these are the same variances that were granted in the original preliminary plat.
Again, no one has signed up, commissioners? I move variance on TE4. We have a motion and a second to approve the variance to TE4. Cast your votes and it's approved. Move the application. We have a motion and a second to approve item 28. Cast your votes and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 29 has been continued to September 11th. Item 30, C 6637, preliminary plat at the Chateau's at Rose Creek located south of northwest 178th and east of Portland Avenue.
We wouldn't hear you if you were sitting down.
Derek Milliken with JGV Engineers on behalf of the client.
Okay.
We don't, we don't take any issue with any of the staff recommendations at this time. There are a couple of lots that were undersized and we're going to make some adjustments to correct that.
Okay. Again, commissioners, no one's signed up on this item?
Mr. Chairman, there, this has came to us before for condos that were not consistent with the zoning. This is consistent with zoning. Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 30. Cast your votes and it's approved.
Item 31, C 6644, final plat of La Chateau located north of Southeast 44th, east of Henni Road.
Mark Grubbs on behalf of the applicant. The plat conforms to the zoning and we agree to the TE's, just ask your approval.
No one signed up?
I have a question because we've, we've heard this a couple of times before and, and there was some agreement between you guys and the neighbors to the north, particularly the two property owners whose front yards will be in somebody's backyard. What's between, you've got an emergency access gate, whatever it is, between, you know, the lot, the division, subdivision to the north, but, but you were doing something to shield those two property owners that have those two lots right next door to the backyards of your guys. Was there...
I don't, I don't think there was ever an agreement reached there.
I don't think that, that the one on the, on the, would be on the west side of that cul-de-sac, I think it's a vacant lot. I think it's part of the house that's to the north. The only, the only one that is, that lot was built on is the one on the east side and of course it backs up to those two cul-de-sac lots and I think there's enough distance there that it wouldn't be a big concern.
But I just have this vague memory, Jim, that we, one of the, that one of those lot owners came and said, "What am I going to do?" And I thought there was some agreement between you guys and that guy for fencing or shielding or something or... or something, or am I making that up?
Not that I recall, anyway.
Okay. Okay. Any protests?
No one signed up.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 31. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 32, C 6646, the final plat of Mar-a-Lago, located west of John Patrick Turnpike and south of Northwest 23rd Street. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, on behalf of the applicant. We have read and reviewed the technical evaluations and agree with all of them. This final plat matches the preliminary that was previously approved.
No one signed up, commissioners? We have a motion and a second to approve item 32. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 33, C 6647, final plat of LS2 Development, located east of Western Avenue and south of Southwest 119th Street.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering, on behalf of the applicant. I have reviewed the TE's and have no objection to them. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, commissioners, no one signed up?
Dwight, what's our goal with this piece?
I beg your pardon?
What's our goal with this piece of property, the way it's laid out?
To be able to do lot splits contingent upon potential buyers and what they want to lay out. There has already been three splits on this piece of property, and therefore cannot be split anymore without final plating it. So our goal at this time is to get the plat approved.
Move approval.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 33. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 34, PUD 1535, application by Mercy Health, Oklahoma, to rezone 19201 North Portland Avenue to the PUD 1535 district.
Tried to be ready. Brian Kuhn with Hewitt Zollers, representing the applicant. This is a site out on North Portland, north of Edmund Road, west side of Portland. Here's some exhibits that we turned in, most recently a few weeks ago. I don't think they made it into your packet, so we brought them today. First of all, I'll start off with TE's. We're okay with all the TE's, agree with all the TE's. Couple of things, we have met with Mr. Gales numerous times, met with Mr. Yocel once on this. One of the things we agreed to do, and I brought some exhibits today, was to try to come up with an architectural style that we will use throughout the development. And that exhibits you have, I believe the first three are those. The next two, on track two of this PUD, track two is the new Mercy Hospital. We'll be out, and you've seen it, it's on that site plan right there. It's the big dark building there, the new Mercy. It will be somewhere in use to the new one that's out on I-35 and Edmund. But anyway, we've incorporated these into the documents, and in those sheets that you have is similar to what Mercy will build. They have not designed their building yet. They are telling me this is a little ways out for what they're going to do. So they have not picked an architectural style, but we all know Mercy. We all know that they're going to do something, I think, that will be good. One of the things, if you have seen the Mercy site out on I-35, they have a 19-foot monument sign, which is what we're asking for, and you've got the exhibit in there to show how big that sign is, what it'll look like. And Mr. Yocel, Mr. Gales also asked for us to have a unified type sign out there, so that when you're driving down Portland, whatever you see, the sign will always look the same, except for the words on it. So we've agreed to that, and we've put that into the documents also. One of the changes we had originally, I think six driveways out onto Portland potentially, and we've spread those out so they could be, you know, spaced apart. Again, we don't know what's going to happen on track one in the future. We've done a concept layout, but you will see a specific site plan on any building that comes out here. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions and ask for your approval. Yes.
Section 911 says, "Specific uses proposed to incorporate alternate materials not listed will be reviewed by the planning director through the specific plan process." We just want to delete "planning director." We'll see it in the specific plan.
We've taken out the wording about the planning director. The wording about the planning director is not in there anymore. It's not in the new documents, turned in several weeks ago.
Okay, so facade regulations, section 911, is different?
Well, all we did is we said it's not up to the planning director. It'll still be up to you and the specific...
I just wanted to delete "planning director." That was what I was...
Yes, yeah, it's out.
Okay, so we're on the same page there?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, other discussion? Nick?
Mr. Chairman, we have met several times. There have been a lot of amendments. I have the multiple renditions. Overall, I think we're there. I'm going to recommend approval. My big concern about this is it's a large track. The hospital pretty much will take care of itself, but we have another roughly 60 acres there that needs to be, have some commonality and unity. I believe that's been built into the PUD now, including with the signed package. Architecturally, we're going to get to see it before it goes up. There are some things in the architectural design for that track, some flexibility. They can go as much as four stories. They can use a number of materials. Obviously, some of those materials, you could make a four-story building, and it would be very attractive. Or you could use those same materials and come up with a four-story building that was less than desirable. We talked a great deal about that. I believe our... I'm comfortable with that because we get to see the specific plan. Other than that, I believe they incorporated everything.
Brian?
Thank you. One of the comments I did mean to make on item three, that metal panels will not, but will, shall be removed from the list of acceptable materials for screening. One of the things that Mercy needs is when you have rooftop units, they try to screen those, and you can't really screen them with a brick. Wood won't last on the roof, so they are asking for metal panel on the roof to screen that. And remember, we talked about their dumpster down in their loading dock, so there will be some architectural metal screening that, but not on the property lines at all.
That's screening material. That's not building material.
Right, right. But this talk about acceptable materials for screening, we will not use it for boundary screening.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion, commissioners? No one signed up?
Well, how many 19-foot signs are you putting on Portland?
I think, let me look. I think, just a minute here.
Two on section one and one on section two, if I've got it right, three total.
That's right.
One on the hospital.
One on the hospital and two on the other 60 acres.
Total of three, Bob.
Subject to your approval.
Yes. Eventually, if what you design... And then the other question I have is that what you just handed out, I like the architecture that you're proposing on the buildings, but what on this four-story building, is that all just offices, commercial, or what's...
That's offices and commercial. That's in another state project that we are, one of our architects have worked on. It's just, that's more for style. That's all these drawings are for.
That's not going to be for... You're not going to put a four-story...
There could be. There could be four-story on track one, but again, those are for style only. And again, you're going to see, like Mr. Gales said, you're going to see the site, specific plans. If I have four stories of nothing but ephes, you're not going to like that, and I'm going to know that. So that, I don't know what that material is. Again, those are for style only.
And on the EMD signs, will these be... These are Level 1, so there's no movement, there's no rolling?
The only place we have EMD is on the corner, and it is limited to a certain square footage for a gas sales price.
But no road runners?
Right.
You see what I mean? That's just, I think that's what... Well, I had a lot of questions about this entire application, but with the thickness of what Mr. Gales amendments, et cetera, and I know that, Mr. Chairman, you've been involved in this too, that I defer to your judgment and to Mr. Gales' judgment.
It's always risky, but go ahead.
I'm going to approve.
We have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 34. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Item 35, PC 10377, application to rezone 1500 Southwest 44th Street, Lamar One Single Family to O1 Limited Office.
Leslie Dozier, on behalf of the applicant, hoping to rezone the property to Office One.
This is one of those continuing on, you know, changing a residential area to an office, but then in looking at the map of the neighbors to the west on Southwest 44th, it seems to me that the disease has already occurred, and so I move approval of the application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 35. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 36, ABC 817, application by Spradling Kennedy and McPhail to rezone 101,000 Northwest 192nd Street for ABC 2 overlay district.
David Kennedy, address is 1601 Northwest Expressway in Oklahoma City, and this is an ABC 2 application for a prospective Henry Hudson's at that location.
Okay. Commissioners, no one signed up?
I noticed there's a church right across the street. No resistance.
I don't think it's... Based on what I'm seeing, I don't think it's right across the street. I think it's vacant across the street.
1292nd Street, aren't we?
Yes.
Not a church there, Lee, I don't think.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Move approval. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 36. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 37, ABC 815, application for ABC 2 overlay located at 2312 North MacArthur Boulevard.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Ijama Popola, and the address is 2312 North MacArthur Boulevard, and I'm here to request an ABC license for my restaurant.
Okay. This says the church across the street, Lee.
Right.
There is my church, Mr. Chairman.
So there used to be a Walmart right across the street that's not there anymore, and there apartment complexes, and then there's a church. But there's another, three other restaurants that are by me, and one also serves alcohol.
Well, there's an ABC One out in front of you.
Right.
And then in the strip shop, your same strip shop all to the south of you is also ABC.
Right.
And are all those still operating?
Yes.
And they're full, and you need some more. Is that it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think down on the end of that, I think, is a club, isn't it?
Right.
The south end of that.
That's actually right across the church.
The way this property sits, if I may, is that the... It's a center. The church faces back toward 23rd Street. The center faces all back toward MacArthur.
Correct.
There's actually a fairly decent separation between this particular property, just by the nature of the way the respective parcels sit on their lot lines.
Well, I also believe if you... Not that we need to follow this necessarily, but if you look at the ABLE distance requirements and how they measure, measurements are from the doors. So you'd have, from the church, you'd have to go out down 23rd Street, come back around MacArthur. So that's a...
Well, those measurements only come into play if the primary purpose is out.
No, I understand, but my point is, yeah, they may back up to one another a little bit here, but they're really not that close, I guess.
Yeah, exactly. That was, I agree with you, Nick.
It's consistent, I think, with the others in the shopping center, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good.
I used to own a box knowledge of the club at the end of the shopping strip. I'm going to move approval. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 37. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 38, CE 821, application by Rico Downtown Development, closed South Harvey Avenue and Southwest 2nd Street.
I talked to my client right after we talked earlier. He will not be here, but I have no authority to withdraw, so we'll just leave it to you to vote as you please, so...
Well, if there's a motion to deny, it needs to be on the basis that we just don't close public streets.
Right. Right. This is, to me, this is a more punitive example than the one that we denied two, three weeks ago with respect of the manufacturing company...
Cameron Industries.
...in South Oklahoma City. And we, they wanted to close it to enclose their lot. This is just closing to... I'm not sure why. I mean, I don't see a continuity of operation here that would even direct this particular point, so I'll move to deny.
Second. We have a motion and a second to deny item 38. Cast your votes, and it's denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Oh, Janice did not vote on that, by the way. She abstained.
Item 39, Spud 773, application by 2808 Restment, to rezone 2801 Southwest 30th Street from R2 to Spud 773.
Gentlemen, my name is, and Mrs. Powers. I'm Bill Collins, here on behalf of the applicant. We agree to all the technical evaluations.
No one's signed up, commissioners?
No approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 39. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 40, SPUD 774, application by William Donovan, to rezone 2441 through 2445 Northwest 1st Street.
I'm Miss Swank, on behalf of applicant 3601 Northwest Classen. We're requesting the spud to allow the business, which is a distribution company of autoglass and parts, to expand their building. It's a simple add-on. The current lots are zoned R1. We sent letters out to the residents asking for any comments or concerns. We only heard back from one resident, which is the R2 piece of property that you can see that's directly across the street from us of Northwest 1st, and their feedback was positive, indicating that anything basically would be an improvement. Their ownership is City Care, which helps homeless people transition in the new homes, and that duplex is one of the homes that they would transition into. Any conditions that the city staff has put down, we're in agreement on. If you have any questions or concerns?
No one's signed up, and they will have to screen to the east. That right between this use and residential, so that's taken care of by the ordinance.
And we also have that specified in here. I'm sorry?
I don't oppose the application. I think it's... But there's a phenomena kind of going on on North Villa, because coming west on the new I-40, that's the exit for Villa, Agnew, and May Avenue. And I've traveled, I go on Pershing to go to my house on there, and I used to just, you know, momentarily stop and go on, and now you have to wait for traffic. It's just, it's becoming a really kind of interesting major thoroughfare that these places in there that need sort of extraordinary renovation and repair. At some point in time, people are going to wake up and say, "Well, there's traffic going along here," and we need to be cautious about just approving something that's not very attractive on this villa, because that's now a gateway into that part of the world going up May Avenue. on this villa, because that's now a gateway into that part of the world going up May Avenue. It's really interesting. But anyway, I move approval of this application.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item forty. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Thank you.
Janice, is she on?
Item forty-one, SPUD seven seventy-nine. Application by OKC Warehouse Management to rezone sixty-eight twenty North Classen Boulevard.
Good afternoon again. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, representing the applicant. This was a previous P, uh, SPUD to allow offices. It was missing a use that we needed, and that's the ability to have daycare facility. And that's what's proposed here. So we've added that use to the previously approved Spud. We have read the staff's comments, and we agree with them. And this is going to be developed in conjunction with the health facility that's, was a previous building to the south of this, that had the hoop structure on it. It's being redesigned and redeveloped. And all the parking will be shared. It's the same owner on both tracks.
Apropos of our earlier meeting, Te, you can get all of the pieces in place to secure the support for common areas in the future.
That's right.
No one's signed up. We have a variance to TE three. Janice? About common areas? You missed the urban development committee meeting earlier where we talked about common areas. And the issue was, in part, how do we support financially and require support financially for those to be maintained into the future? That was a large part of our discussion this morning. I said that. What's not on this one, is it? I did that.
Yes. The, uh, I forgot to bring my board up. You mind if I grab that?
I misspoke about the TE on this one. It's the next one. Janice, you might want to grab your mic.
I apologize. Yes, you can see, the, this is the healthcare facility building that's proposed south of our Spud area. And there will be a running track developed around the entire site that'll also work as part of the sidewalk system. So there's a tree buffer, a landscape buffer, and then the running track before you get to the parking. So there's about a twenty-foot setback from the two residences that are here. We're anticipating, requesting the Traffic Commission to allow some on-street parking, which will include landscaping and islands to improve on the curb appeal. And a lot of landscaping is, is also envisioned throughout the entire site. That help?
So you're, you're thinking you're going to do on-street parking on the north side there?
And the south. That's a separate application we're going to go to the Traffic Commission and request.
Because there are residences across the street to the north as well.
To the north, yes.
Okay. But all, is the daycare center gonna be for the use, for the, for the...
The same employee that controls this.
Okay, not, not open to the public kind of daycare?
Correct.
Oh, okay, well, that would...
It's limited to, in the Spud, to, the parking and everything in the building is limited to the number of children that'll be there. And right now, it's at a hundred. So it's a limited use.
So there wouldn't be the need for like a huge queuing kind of thing for drop-off and pickup?
And the queuing area is within their parking lot here. So there won't be any queuing on the street.
Okay, and, and all of the vehicular access is from the south? It's not coming off of...
There's one drive on Sixty-Eighth, but nothing from our Spud. That's the language in the TE.
Oh, nothing from, oh, I see.
There's one drive on Sixty-Eighth, one drive on Sixty-Seventh Street.
But that's part of the, the previous, or the other, the other Spud?
Yeah, the tract of land allowed for that.
All right.
So we're not gonna add in additional driveways.
Okay, all right. Um, is there anybody here who wants to speak on this?
No, as I know.
I'll, I'll move approval.
Thank you.
Knowing as I do that you won't take extra care to make sure that that buffering is in place.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item forty-one. Cast your votes. And it's approved.
Thank you.
Item forty-two, C-sixty-six forty-one. Final plat of Marshall Industrial located west of I-thirty-five and south of I-two forty.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering on behalf of the applicant. I have read and agree with all the TE's and be happy to answer any questions.
We do have someone signed up. James Sherman. Mr. Sherman, if you'd give us your name and address, please.
James S. Sherman. I live at eight one one two Southeast Linda Lane, the five acres immediately south of this project.
Thank you.
We were contacted several weeks ago, and because we were contacted, one of the things that happened to me was going back to day one. Day one, this project and the people that are running all of the issues had bulldozers on our side of the property line, took out five of my trees and all of my property fence. I came home from our church because I was at a meeting. I got the call, and I came home, and I asked them to stop doing what they were doing because they were on private property, and they stopped. When they stopped, I had lost my privacy fence plus the five trees. They were on tree number six when I got there. Aside of all of that, that's, that really caused me a problem. And I went over to the company office, and I explained myself, who I was, where I was at, why I was there. And the next day, they had a fenced property crew come over, and on their side of the property line, they put in a privacy ten-foot fence all the way down from Linda Lane, all the way down, which I thought was pretty nice. At least they were trying to do something. At that time, I went into the, I wonder what's gonna happen next stage? I had something as a severe medical disease, but I had encephalitis. And my five year of being poisoned in the brain caused me to slow down and stop and cease to exist in my physical body. At seventy-five years old, I had to come back alive, and I was basically brought into existence again. After that project, I've had difficulty understanding and doing everything that is what I'll call humanly normal. At that point, one of the things that came into my property was the fact that they are making weird noises at strange times of the day. First of all, they had bulldozers back again, doing stuff. And I'm wondering, what in the world is going on on this five, nine acres just north of us? At that time, one of the things that bothered me was the fact they've doing things, they didn't talk to us, they didn't ask us, they didn't say anything about us. But buildings, uh, buildings went up, trucks went on the property. The road, Linda Lane, which is the property on the east, uh, west side of this, basically Linda Lane is destroyed. Eighteen-wheelers, even though there's signs on the eighteen-wheelers, not allowed, there's eighteen-wheelers on there blocking the road, stopping traffic, slowing things down. I cannot drive through on, on a given day like today. There were five semi-trucks on that little one-block street, doing stuff for projects. I'm not saying this company was responsible for those eighteen-wheelers, but basically they're using Linda Lane, signs on both ends of the street saying, don't, no eighteen-wheelers allowed. And yet they're allowed there. They are allowed there by the city. I've called nine one one, I've complained, nothing happens. Basically, it seems like nobody cares. The project on part three here, the development and the continued development of this division has basically done some things to restrict the access on Linda Lane into that area. The, there's no place for eighteen-wheelers to go to. So they move into the private property and, they were driving on my property this morning, parked on my property this morning, inside of that ten-foot safe zone. They were actually literally, three of them parked there, blocking my driveway from my house. I could not leave my house under an emergency condition this morning because of the eighteen-wheeler that was blocking my driveway. That in addition to the fact that they have ceased to communicate with us in any sense of favor, other than the fact that they have seemed to seemingly disrupted, they have a drilling pipeline thing going on there where they're cleaning oil field pipe. They're doing that when the wind's out of the north. I had six thousand dollars of inch to pay for a brand-new air conditioning system because that debris that comes off of that pipe cleaning ruined the air conditioner that I had on our property at that time. I've replaced that, I'm still paying for it, but the point is, now I've got a problem because I have to clean that once every three or four weeks. I have to go out there and do what has to be done to protect that air conditioner from the debris coming off of this piece of property. The wind out of the north can't be stopped. That's God's idea, not mine. But the point is, the wind out of the north, I get all that stuff, and they're cleaning the pipes, and all their construction and everything comes right over onto our five acres, and my house and our air conditioner begins to get disrupted. Other than that, the problem is the fact that they have refused to communicate with us in any sense of the way, and they're building, they put a brand-new building up on that piece of property. I didn't know it was coming, but four days after they started, it was up. I've heard, I'm not saying it's true, but I've heard that they plan on ten more buildings along Linda Lane inside of their fence. Ten more buildings. We already have a drug problem in that area. We already have a security problem in that area. We already have what I call lack of city support to repair the road that's on that Linda Lane name. They have refused to do anything except for an occasional show up with a little bit of oil or a little bit of this to fill in one hole or two holes. That's all they've ever done. Now, on the south side of us, the industrial park that's there has worked magic trying to blend with us and stay with us and help us because we're sandwiched in between two big industrial parks. The south company, they've done amazing things to be able to be what I call a good company. This place on the north side has literally torn us up. They've torn us out of existence as far as, it's like they're trying to make us leave. It's like they're doing everything they can to irritate us, to sell that property and get out of there. I've been told that they want to buy us out, but they have made me an offer, and I wouldn't sell up one way or the other. Where can I go? What can I do? I made, you know? But the point is, it's not about me making money, it's about me protecting my wife and our grandchildren. And I can't do that with this kind of construction going on. The noise level from the oil field pump, it breaks or it runs up, it, it goes crazy. It makes all kinds of noises, keeps me awake at night. I didn't even know they had an authorization to have an oil because for a lot of years it wasn't there. And suddenly, over the last six or seven months, they've got this pump thing going on, and the noise level of it is terrible. It's anything but normal as far as sound goes. And it's immediately noticeable to us. We have tried to redesign ours, to make ours what I call very presentable to the community. I have spent my entire retirement time trying to make that a nice place to drive by. I've been commenting on what I've done. But this industrial park on our north has basically looked like they're trying to run us down and tear us away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for staff. And I, I realize this is a plat, not a zoning case. But looking at the zoning, it appears that the two tracks we're talking about that we're plating today, the west half or so is I-one, or the other part is I-two. Some of the, the uses gentlemen just talking about do not appear, from his comments, to be consistent with I-one.
I, I was thinking the same thing.
So maybe there can be some relief in this situation if we had somebody go out and...
And the I-one is up where his house is.
Well, his house is, on the aerial, is really tight to that, that property line.
Right.
So my suggestion would be maybe we, we have somebody look at it. Dwight, my suggestion to you is apparently your client's not a very good neighbor.
This is the first I've heard about it, Mr. Butler.
Well, no, I understand. It's, but, and it's not you, it's your client, so you might have an, also might have a talk with them.
More than happy to.
You want to continue this?
I, I think we ought to take a little bit stronger look at this thing, and let's have a little PR before we, before we, I want PR before I vote on it. And, you know, continue this thing and make sure that you go to these people and you make it right. That's pathetic if, you know, if that's what's going on.
And I saw no evidence while I was out there.
I understand, Dwight, it's not your fault, I understand. But I, I think your client needs to do a little PR.
I, I will certainly make it happen.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Brian Sherman. I'm at eighty forty Southeast Linda Lane, which is just south of, of this gentleman's property. The noise, the biggest thing, I'm an acre, almost an acre and a half away, and, and that pump running, ka-chunk, 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 twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Is this a pumping oil jack? Is this a pumping well? What do you...
I don't know what it is. I just know it's pumping.
There is an oil well on the site.
And is there a horseshoe, a little gasoline engine that pumps?
There is a pump jack, yes. Now, I don't believe it belongs to my client, but...
Well, it may not, but it sounds like it's a natural gas engine if it goes, if it makes the sound that you're describing.
The pumping johnny, yes.
That would be, I, I can't all talk from a distance. You've got to be at a microphone. And the reason is, not that we don't want to hear you, but this is recorded, and people watch it, and they'll miss part of what's being discussed.
And this, this final plat application is simply so that we can split the lots at a future date? We're not trying to change any uses or anything whatsoever.
We understand that, but the, when I looked at the diagram here, I, I see the split zoning, the I-one, I-two, and some of the discussion led me to believe what I mentioned to JJ. And I would encourage you to talk to your, your people, and I would also encourage us, the city, to go out and make sure that they're...
Well, this is a final plat, so we either have to hear it, or they have to agree to continue it.
Oh, I understand, I, I understand.
We can't continue it without their agreement as a final plat.
I understand.
It doesn't, that part of it, uh, doesn't certainly matter to me. However, there is a variance attached to this application also.
And the only, the only activity I have seen on the site is they did, they, the name of the company that owns it is Oklahoma Rig Fabricators. They build drilling rigs and sell them overseas for the most part. Now, I have seen Piper, I, I used to roughneck myself, so I'm familiar with the operation. But they did have pipe racks on there, and they were cleaning and inspecting some pipe, which obviously we'll call, you'll have to roll the pipe as you do it, so there'd be a little bit of noise there. And they did build one building on the northwest part of the tract, which I would, would think would delimit the noise because it'd be inside the building. But they are a heavy-duty manufacturing facility.
Well, I understand. And the, the question, when he was talking about buildings and what's going on and, and the operations, when I look at the zoning, if, if our zoning map here is correct, it appears part of it's I-one, part of it's I-two. The part closest to his house is I-one. So I would think he would get some element of product, protection from that I-one zoning as opposed to I-two uses in his backyard, if you will. But it, it, still, the proximity is, is there, and...
Yes, sir.
And I think we need to have a, a good neighbor party.
Well, the other issue raised by Mr. Sherman is the street. And the request to vary the street, industrial street level requirement.
Well, and that's why I mentioned to you, Mr. Chairman, there is that TE variance number three to TE three.
And there may be a reason why there needs to be a wide industrial street, according to what you were saying, that this, this just doesn't comply. And I wouldn't move for the variance at all.
Well, if we've, if we've got a pipe yard... Well, if we've, if we've got a pipe yard, 18-wheelers with heavy loads are in and out of there regularly.
I understand that. You also have Southeast 79th Street to your north that is, and I don't, I, I don't know what the access is on any of that, but if they're just roaring down Linda Lane for convenience and they have an opportunity to use, use 79th, uh, maybe they want to use 79th.
And I, I have not seen them utilize Linda Lane that much, but if, um, at the east end of 79th is one-way north. It's the frontage road for I-35, so they, if they get off I-35, they cannot go south to, to 79th and come over. They would have to come in on shields. And they do on the building to the east, which you can't see on this particular map.
I, I understand, but our variance on TE three, Dwight?
Yes, sir.
Is, is varying the road conditions. I'm assuming that variance varies the roads for 79th as well as Linda Lane.
One would have to assume.
That, that's just, you know, my assumption. And, uh, what Bob is saying is, oh, no. And, and I, I, I may agree with the variance on 79th Street, I'm not sure I could ever agree with the variance on Linda Lane, uh, which would be a, another reason that your client should not be using Linda Lane.
Uh, one thing I would also like to point out, uh, I've, I've lived on the property for 15 years on, on Linda Lane. 15 years ago, on both sides of us, it was a field on each side. Uh, there are now two industrial complexes. Well, Linda Lane, for the last 15 years, like my father said, has only been patched and the potholes filled in. It has never been repaved, uh, in 15 years, but the patches have created a, a situation where I'm getting flooded out by rain because the road is so much higher than my house, my foundation. It is, it's, it's really, uh, a bad situation. And Linda Lane can't handle this. That's the, that's the bottom line. That little bitty street can't handle, and both sides of us have problems, have, not a problem for them, but 18-wheelers. They block traffic, police drive by, no big deal, they just keep running on going, you know? It's like, yeah, we've been forgotten, or there's still four houses on that street? So, or five, actually, five houses.
It's all a moor, JJ. See what you can do about enforcing this thing or see what's going on because it's just, it shouldn't be. And so I moved to continue this application.
Well, we, we have to-
It's a final plat, we may not be able to do that without their consent.
Yeah.
Then I move to deny it.
Well, anyway.
Hold on, hold on.
Dwight, can you continue this to our next meeting?
I'd be more than happy to.
Tell us more about the, the need for the variance, what's going on, and what the uses are. That should also give staff time to give, report back to their findings.
And I, I would request staff to assist me in finding out what is going on out there, and, because I don't want to, I don't want to add to any disruption in a neighborhood by any means.
Well, we might look at whether there are curb cuts on Linda Lane into this site and whether maybe we shouldn't have them.
Also on 79th Street, and that could be part of our plat.
Right.
Yeah. Well, Linda Lane shouldn't be being used for trucks on it anyway.
No, I, I am not aware of trucks using it at this time for, for, for my client's project.
And that's one thing that needs to be, and it, uh, it kind of concerns me about the well. Has that well just started repumping, or do you know anything about the well?
No, sir. The well has been there since I started this project probably four years ago, and we, I've, we've looked at several things on this particular piece of ground.
So you don't know where it's just been cleaned out and started repumping or not?
I honestly don't, sir.
Okay.
No.
Well, the well would be operated by somebody other than the applicant, and what is likely to have occurred is when it was initially drilled, it was a flowing well.
I'm not sure that he-
Let me, let me finish, please.
Go ahead.
Uh, and at some point, the production dropped off to such a level that they installed the pump. So the pump would be something that could have been installed fairly recently and is common in the oil field. Now, what typically happens in, within the city limits is those are electric.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to say.
The motors are electric. I'm sorry, Mr. Sherman, you were going to say?
I'm not sure that he or they are the pump people. First of all, it's been shut down for quite a while, almost 10 or 12 years, nothing, it just sat there and nothing happened. And then all of a sudden, overnight, they, they, somebody came in and tore it out, run wire or pipe or something underground, took 17 days for them to do what they were doing, and then all of a sudden, it started back up again.
That's, that's typical. That's not unusual.
Yeah, I know it's not, but the point is, whatever they're doing, I got a water well, two of them, on our property that are impacted by water pressure now because of what's going on somewhere. I'm not saying that that well did it, or their digging did it.
Yeah.
But the point is, my water pressure, we had to replace pumps.
Um, there's unlikely to be a connection. They would have had to cement surface pipe down, down below the water table, so, uh, I suspect that's not the issue. But I think we're addressing the things that you're concerned about. This will be continued to our next meeting. The city will go out and take a look at what's actually happening on the ground there, and we'll have better information in September.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to continue item 42 to September 11th. Cast your votes. That's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the last item is item 43, C6648, final plat of Waterwood Estates located west of MacArthur and south of 164th Street.
Mr. Chairman, Members of Commission, Brian Kuhn with you. It's always represented applicant. Um, this final plat matches the preliminary plat that was approved several months ago. We agree with all the TEs, with I would like to add some language to TE number four, that are asking for a sidewalk to be put along Northwest 164th, and we agree to that unless it's in violation of Corps of Engineers rules. That pond and the creek that's associated with that is called jurisdictional waterway. We may not be able to change anything in that right of way as far as that's concerned. If we can, we'll put the sidewalk in, but if Corps of Engineers says no, then if it's in violation of their rules, we can't, so.
Well, you don't want to build a bridge for a sidewalk?
No, it's not necessarily a bridge.
I'm teasing.
That, yeah.
Will amend item four to say, with the consent of the Corps of Engineers-
Yes.
Or something to that effect.
And we're asking-
Say that they've approved it.
Yes, and we're asking for variance on TE-
TE three, yeah, got that. No one signed up? Variance on TE three, Commissioners?
Move variance on TE three.
Your motion is second to approve the variance to TE three. Cast your votes. That's approved.
The application.
May I ask a quick question?
No.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Already did, I guess. Item 38, that easement closure that I did so well about, um, does that go to council? Okay, thank you.
Just be sure to tell them we denied it for traffic reasons. Okay, so now we, motion to approve item 43, amending TE number four. Cast your votes. And it's approved. The rest of the items are continued or withdrawn.
I'm sorry, one of the items that we continued today was the annexation of the Sportsman's Club, and I understand that that may be because it's about to change hands again or something's happening there. Um, I do think that if the owner is not going to move forward with the annexation, whether it's this owner or some other owner, at some point, the city really ought to annex the Sportsman's Club. It should have been part of the city long ago, except for this gentleman's agreement or whatever you want to call it about the sales tax. And now that it's no longer in operation as the Sportsman's Club, I don't see any reason why that should be relevant. The property will unquestionably be developed and, uh, into something, and I think, you know, when it does, the city needs to be involved in that process, and I think the only way we can do that is if it's-
No, I think that makes sense, and we can always initiate the reason, you know, the annexation at a future date depending on circumstances. Right, Susan? Okay, planning commission committees, nothing. Planning commission members, anything?
I won't be at the meeting September 11th.
I'm, I'm iffy on the 11th also, so we'll, we'll see. Anyone else, planning department? There is no planning department here today. It's invisible.
Development services.
Development services, anything, JJ? Municipal counselor? Citizens to be heard, none? Other business? And motion adjourned.
I move.
And we adjourn.